Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this town council meeting on Thursday, nineteenth of August, two thousand twenty-one. I'd like to welcome members here tonight and members of the public. If you've got a mobile phone, could you please click on silence or turn it off, please? The duration of this meeting, I'd like for everyone to be outstanding and give a minute's silence if I'll put time in place for the people that we've lost over the last twelve months due to Covid and other complaints. Thank you. Thank you very much, members of the public. Tonight's meeting is being streamed on Facebook on the Town Council's website to give the opportunity for people that can't make this meeting and for people with disabilities that obviously can't make it. If any member has a question, if you can just raise your hand, please, I can come to you. If we can't hear you because we're trying to pick it up on the camera, Scott will pass the mic now. So we can put any questions for... If we open the meeting, don't you say a council meeting, you are hereby summoned to attend a meeting of Enders Town Council, to be under the name of Enders Town Council Community Centre, Bunnshir Road Centre, commencing at seven thirty on Thursday, nineteenth of August, two thousand twenty-one, for the purpose of transactions and following business. Item number one, apologies for actions. We receive apologies for actions and consider their improved reason for the actions. All attendance, once again, thank you, members. Item number two, declarators of interest. Councils should disclose peculiary or non-peculiary interests in any item on this agenda. We don't have any on tonight's agenda. Item number three, Wakefield Council's local plan two thousand and thirty-six. To continue Wakefield's local plan two thousand and thirty-six, Alan Dowd is the chairman from today.
Thank you, chairman. Is it just to confirm the council contention to object to reference Act two thousand and one in the local plan? And assuming that is the case, to what I would naturally agree with the council planning consultant, who are the publicists, to log the council's objection and objections on behalf of itself. I'm pleased.
Thank you, Valerian Allen. Yeah, could we put back to a vote, everybody's happy with that, you know, with the sort you saw at Woodland? It's all right, it's all right, everybody's supported that, yeah. That's unanimous then, Alan, yeah? Item number four, Enders Water Park fishing. To review all aspects of fishing at the water park. Well, I think as it stands at the moment, I think there was a fourteen, fifteen month break because of Covid. But I think in May and June, two thousand nineteen, when the council had a turnaround to open speed. I know that both myself and council architect visited Enders Water Park, the bottom lake. And I think at that time, Pete stressed that he needed quite a lot of work doing to it. There's lots of silt, lots been washed down to bottom lake from the beaches, southern the beaches. And then I think it progressed to about November, I would have confirmed that. And we got a survey done, which cost the council two and a half thousand pounds. We needed specialist advice on this to decide what we could do with the bottom lake and what we could do with algae on the top lake and excessive weeds that were growing. Some ideas that we had, they weren't adequate enough to bring a tank of it, you know, to suck the silt out, one to another. And the Ebsford before, I think whatever the group did on, basically stated, if you remember, that it would cost its regions around twenty thousand pounds for them to technically do it professionally, not damaging the biodiversity that's in that lake. So that's basically, you know, over the years, there's not much work being done or money invested into making so much speed. And that's where we were up to that point. Obviously, there's new ideas coming forward, but some people want night fishing to be brought back. Some people that used to fishing, fishing clubs don't want night fishing because of certain aspects of that. So it's down to members to decide now a way to move forward with that bottom lake and then obviously with the top lake and what in with where it's positioned. So I could please talk to members first, if that's okay? If I'm in an opportunity, just one asking to you, yeah?
On that bottom lake, it was the trip the world, thirty odd pegs. And that meant a lot of money. Now... We spent money having this story on, a flood on them all. Hopefully, at some later days, we might be able to get it done. And don't let that hold and fishermen go back on. Then you'd see our reality. And if it's not done, it's not coming through.
Yeah. I think, you know, as Enders Town Council at that time in nineteen, then we had Covid, so things were on. But the clubs that we had were at our reach, if I'm right, Alan, we had doing twenty thousand. So I think what we need to do probably is probably wait for the district council in Moors Lake to see if we can get some money that is not coming in from Wakefield to look towards this. See if we can get some grants from sports even though we're having a holiday, picking a pie for them. And then obviously if we can put, you know, what we can afford towards it to try and rejuvenate this lake back, restore the glory, so to speak, and, you know, put some work in the top leg, the midline. And then obviously, I hope to get it tested, I hope to restock in again. And then the next thing then in the inside on how we're going to manage fishing, you know, on that.
Mr Chairman, I would say, well, that's the same thing, so there are few issues for members in the tin side watch to be aware of. I've currently waiting for a device, product, product environmental regarding dredging, that's what I've worked in that lower line. And separate, excuse me, and separate to that, a quote, to remove the algae, which should be a lot cheaper. I mentioned before, because that's the cost of that riddle quote. I think it ranges in the cheap because I'm eighty thousand, fifty thousand. That would need to be the external debt funding or budget for over seventy years. Obviously, that's still in process. But I would advise members to act inside the staff, if we're not helping to know what to enforce. Do you want just further on? Do you want that? You should think like that, I'm relaxed, and we can know that tonight.
Yeah. On... Yeah, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Last Thursday, I wanted to meet in, you know, my relative, he said we could either prepare a council part of the area, it's important, very good suggestions in relation to fishing. And I kept on board what you said, Mr Chairman, about progressing it, now we need to do it. And when Baz asked me about the council about getting some monitoring system, doing that, like it starts, he said it's possible.
Yes.
So what I'm going to suggest is, I think a fine start would be, is to, is to, is to, is to, you know, see how many different fishermen or clubs that are out there to work with you and others. Because obviously, we don't decide how we're going to get spent. It's got to go through, sorry, yeah?
It's got to go through a steering group and then it goes through to Wakefield. There's an officer being appointed and then it's, you know, it's how it passed or it's not. But obviously, I fully support you, the one, I think it's a great idea and I think we should be fishing down here. So my suggestion is at the moment, if you want to work with us and especially work with me, you're part of this, we will actually do let's carry on.
Can I just say something?
Yeah, sorry, man. Yeah, I want to get, as a border path, that's how it used to be. I want to get people down there, young ones as well. I've been there since nineteen eighty-five. I've seen what's now adults as kids, bring their kids. It's a communal area, it's a communal park, it should be for the community. I went down to that park over there last week, with two old couple from Royston. They asked me if I knew anything about, like, how to tell them the truth about there's no roach, no tension. There's hardly any fish stopper's work, told them the reason why, poaching. Now, this is one of the main things that's been right in Britain in the last seven or eight years. Carp anglers and catch poachers got other clubs to sign a petition. Now the police see poaching as a crime. When we used to ring up the police about poachers, they used to poke us off, ringing about mental health. Wasn't enough because they didn't do nothing. Now police consider it a crime. There's no point investing any money in deep lakes or fish stocks if there's no security. I went down there overnight. At lunchtime, I sit down by the lake, we chat for an hour or two. It's happened over an hour and a half. I could have been poaching, I could have walked away with twenty fish. They need some sort of security. That's been going on, poaching for years. And that's why a lot of the locals round here, anglers, took a point themselves to night fish. We've chased poachers off. I've even seen locals protecting the barrel handles off the car paddles and chasing poachers off. Not only that, we used to deter a lot of trouble. We used to deter a lot of idiots who defended them, damaging trees, setting fires to burns, campfires. We stopped people from nicking tiles off the windsurfer pub when they were closed up. It's the way the locals have protected and helped that place, helped clean up after all, crowds have dropped. So far, the field has been appreciated by this council, by them stopping some of what they've been used to since nineteen ninety, when Simon, the landlord of the windsurfer, asked himself and to others to bring night fish to deter trouble, which it worked.
What's about?
Just one thing, how many vehicles have been pinched while under labor and we were night fishing compared to the last two years?
How many what?
Vehicles. Nothing's been pinched hardly from the pub, from the cafe, because night fishermen deter people what were out of trouble. Look what's happened in two years, you've had fish stolen. Carp fish over twenty pounds can cost hundred pound plus. You've got a boy captain here, what's just something over a thousand. But to foreigners, it's dinner. Now, people saying fish being stolen and took away from that lake during the day. I've even been told by a councillor, Jean, that Jean's seen somebody eating one on the battlefield at night, from Dave. I've seen them poaching, but I'm not worried. We've been challenged, three or four blokes, who've turned by island, for a council that's not prepared to walk back for it. It's not fair on their community.
Just one minute, because if you do it on an evening, prior, then why are you not prepared to set them without it?
I've couldn't set them without because of the state of the lakes. I've had many years out of them lakes. And I've got photos of, I've got everything what were in that lake. A lot of us have had many... Just one minute, there has been different people poaching down there. We know that, we've seen long lines, that's been out.
I see it in that near where I walked off.
And I remember having a meeting with ourselves and at that time, going back a few years, maybe thirty-eighteen months, I thought it was a decent idea, reasonable idea for one or two other club to night fish. The stumbling block with that, if members remember when it was brought back to members, was, one, we couldn't, we could not just leave it in one little club, which, well, I think four or six of your members, we had to open it to everybody and anybody. And two, we had complaints then, that if you were night fishing, or there were others who are night fishing on decent pegs, then the people that were in clubs, and I think you'll bounce for this, Arthur.
Oh, well, yeah.
That when they tried to get on eight o'clock on a Sunday morning, the night fishermen would not move. And that because the fish had been fed all night, it would have wasted time then fishing.
Right.
So just one minute, we were caught between the devil and the dark blue sea. And so members at that time, we're my twelve month ago, decided not to have any more night fishing. And if it weren't any individual, it were reflective motion that were put forward and that were passed. Now, if members want to alter that and allow a team to night fish, then that's up to members, it's not up to me. But what you've got to bear in mind is, if we had four fishing clubs, we had Alby Working Men's Club, we had Bombs, we had a club from Kirby, and I think Connor used to fish. And him used to fish with Connor, he was standing. And they stopped, they all pulled on it because night fishing, night fishing, what's the limit? And basically, that's it, every year. Have you got anything to say on that, Arthur?
Yes, but... But when we used to go down...
Just one minute, Arthur.
When we used to go, when we used to go down on a Saturday for matches, there'd be three or four, and be night fishing, all night. And we asked them to move and they wouldn't move. We'd have to wait while one of the men from Parkham had shifted them. And this used to happen regularly. And what happened then, we stopped going, we said that's it. There were three or four night fishing, yet there were twenty anglers trying to get on, who begged to go on, and we couldn't get on. And there were teams from Leeds, you could, you could come from everywhere in this area to fish the match. You would have a match on an evening, of little fun and big fun. And then that night fishing wouldn't allow, and they would stop. You can't, the fish won't eat on an night and then on a day. And that's what happened, it was called the day. All clubs said they're not going and they haven't been, and it's gone down ill-scented. And that's what happens with night fishing. It won't move. And then I, I remember a youth, it was like Don Trent, and they were a match on, and they were a youth. And this lad, two, three lads were night fishing and wouldn't move. The young youth put on, they were night fishing, and that ripped into it. The youth won't move. And I'll tell you some tales what happened in the past. They were taking fish from other places and putting them in park. The catfish were there, and they were never ever stopped in there. And they were brought and took where else, and ripped apart. And them catfish, them put the pot of pounds. They don't mess with that, pot of pounds fish, they've got to eat a lot of fish to keep going. And also, beyond that, the cormorants were on. You have to have things on the lake to move the cormorants off. They're skinny to swim. But the night fishing was the thing that sent the water park, yeah, it killed it completely.
I perfectly understand and I agree with, there was a time when labor was in, the youths always put notifications up, where they put the night signs, you're supposed to put notifications up at times when the matches block in days. The workers also used to come round and tell us. Eventually, it stopped. The notifications weren't working, and I'll admit, there were a few times where I've been there and I packed up and everything and there were one or two what were still there. That was the lack of communication between anglers and the council. And also with the catfish, we've got a problem in there now, somebody put pike in. Six adult female pike in there, and there's a button on when the jackpike, they need to come out because they won't devastate all the new spot, new fish what's coming on the young fry, which has got a lot of young fry in that lake now. But then jackpike can buy a load. As far as this problem with night fishing, that seems to be solved, as I've been saying all along. You need a separate, independent committee to govern the lakes, to advise the council on any maintenance, what needs doing, restocking, all of that. The benefit of it is, you get work parties, where you get members from the community, members what's on the committee, going and doing jobs on the lakes, fixing platforms, repairing bankings, day reading. Once you've got a committee going, you can benefit, the council can benefit, by getting people, community, members what's fish to place, to do the work, work with the workers, to keep the lakes up to date, running and running in a well condition. But can I do that if you give, you've got to give, to take? And that's why you need an independent committee. Not of just carp anglers. I river fish, I match fish, well, pleaser fishes, yes, I mainly do carp fishing. Because I like to go fish, specimen fish, carp, pike, bar, and dove. I'm not going to wait for roach to fly out of there, the youth will be. That's all wrong, soldiers and everything else. And the community needs a benefit from it. If you have a committee going and you put certain regulations on night permitting, those who've got a local pass, have got to get the yearly local pass to get the night permit. If you're not local, you don't get a night permit. You'll find out the locals will respect the place more than they will somebody from Wakefield, so. But if you are a committed, any trouble or help like that is on the committee, not on the council.
Okay, so that's...
So, as far as I can understand, yeah, not fishermen, or, you know, bears, or... I always say regarding the, like, the committee party, that sort of thing, but as regards to fishing, the problem we have is, the match fishermen want to fish during the day. The night fishing, if you're feeding the fish on the night, oh, we have too late, couldn't we? But you said planning aim and so, I don't know, this is the question I'm asking.
That's just it. You get the little lake sorted out. There is a way, you can extend that little lake if you want to put the work in. There's a field at the back of that little lake that's flooded with foggy. You can always join two ends of that lake up and extend it, add in more pegs, more data can be done. The pine bit in the middle will become an island, that's sanctuary wildlife, place for swans to lay their egg, stuff like that. The car puts in the big lake, put him into the small lake, he'll kill him. Because the problem to a big flat lake, it'll stress them out and go dark, so you leave that carp in there. Hardly matchmen's going to want to fish during summer on a lake where they're going to be bringing in the rod in two minutes because there's a pedalo going past, or a swimmer going past. Who's going to want to sit there?
Yeah, Baz, you mentioned my name, so I'm going to respond to that because, yes, you are right about people taking the fish off the lake, out of the lake, and putting them on a barbecue, but I certainly didn't eyewitness that. I was told that, so that I'll just clarify that. But I think we have got a problem here because I think the way out of this is, we get a bailiff on. The, I think it's already been mentioned, back in the day, as we know as well, that we had match fishing, it were very popular, and people come, that, all the pigs were full. But we've never had night fishing, as far as I'm aware, we've never had officially night fishing. And so I think the only way around this, to obviously get a bailiff, so that they can do so many hours of the night time and sort the problem out. Because if we want to move forward and we want to get the lakes back to how they were, and I totally agree, they need investment into it, totally understand that. We have got fishermen, a lot of fishermen in surrounding area. And obviously, like, as they mentioned, obviously they come from afar as well, but that's the whole thing of the competition. And I just think, if we want to move forward, we want to get the lakes done, we can't have a night fishing because of the implications in morning, when we've got matches on and we're open, and we said that at the very beginning, when we first got elected, that we'd like to see the match fishing back on. That's not going to happen if we're going to have night fishing, you can't, you've got to have one or the other, because they're not, and you just... We can't have both. And that bottom lake, like Pete was saying, we all agreed at the time, wanted, they wanted dredging and everything. And we all agreed that we'd do that, we did look into it, as I already mentioned, about the Covid and everything, we've put a stop on it. But really, I mean, it's a lot, a lot of money, and we can't really afford to get that bottom lake done, not on our own. Obviously, that's where the mind come in, if it's agreed, it's not, it's not cast in stone. But I think we have to stop the night fishing, that is a problem. There's both problems. And also, you know, people have been night fishing, because I know that for a fact, and obviously that walks the lake most morning between two and four o'clock, is seen a night fishing. And we have had problems where people have been on roof at the cafe bar and try, and there's been attempts in the, in the grounds maintainers area, trying to pinch what they can out of that. And there's still night fishing on. So, you know, that's that argument, but take on board what the gentleman said, and I take on board what Baz has said, but, you know, and I don't, I don't know is, Baz, that fishes, that you know on that lake, but when a fish is during the day, they don't even want to pay his dues and demands, and there's big arguments about it. So I think the way forward is to get some, if members agree, to get some, and also as well, you're right about the community, Baz. It is a community, you don't get a lot of community on night fishing. You get them on day fishing with parents or the adults, but you can't have a group governing the town council. It's not on. You can't, you can't govern the town council, the town council makes the decisions. And if there's a community group and it's agreed by the council, but there's no decisions made by the group, it doesn't govern the council.
Away, there's only one way around this. And that's for one lake, it'd be meant for matches, and one lake for evening. So, you've got two lakes, one of lakes, maybe for matches, and one of lakes, have it for evenings. And they're not interrupting with one another. That's the only way around it. But that little lake, like you said, it could be for match fishing. It's, it is the next, it could be years and years before that gets done.
If we can more progress then, Scott, please, if you can back to me, thank you.
So we've heard a variation of ideas and proposals over this. Like we said, we did put a speed under the table from May two thousand nineteen, we did look into it. We spent two and a half thousand getting a proper professional survey done on that bottom lake. And the cost, I think, was actually a bit close, two hundred and twenty thousand to dredge it and do whatever. So I think the way forward is to look at what grants we can get, get some finance towards it, see what then on our budgets to put towards it, I think Ian will equally with that. I think the view is, and legally, I think Alan will correct this, you can't have a committee that, you know, independent from Enders Town Council or councils to run them to lake because if something happens, somebody's killed or maimed, it'll come straight back, I'm not right with that, Alan. So that, that voice is an idea, I think it's a no-no. And then the other thing that, you know, that we need to put in place, because over the last few weeks... And then the other thing that, you know, that we need to put in place, because over the last few weeks and months, there has been, uh, confrontations with members, uh, from the town council staff that's gone round to look at the day tickets and asked about rod licenses. You know, that obviously, uh, some of the members at staff will not walk up at site because of the rules that they got. So I think what we need to do, if, if anybody buys a season ticket to fish on page, they need to produce a rod license first before they get it. Because there's one or two players round which specifically states here, advisory and agency warning, do you have a rod license, maximum penalty two hundred and fifty thousand pounds. So that's, there's two things I think that we need to put in place, make a motion and put it all in one. That if they buy a day ticket, they must produce a rod license prior to buying the day ticket for fishing. And if they buy a season ticket, then they must produce a rod license before they choose a season ticket. The details must be taken for season ticket, the names addressed, telephone numbers. And then, you know, it's logged in in case anything happens while, while they're fishing there. Uh, I think we need to progress, like we've said, to do something with that small lake, which people agree, because people want, want leader in all this, uh, you know, to try and get something done with it. Uh, and then, you know, put some new signs up, which is similar to this that's here, that's on, on bigger lakes. And then, like we said, if we need a bailiff in to police it, to stop poaching on a night, then that's our responsibility, not members of public, because if they're wrong, it's not members of public to challenge somebody that's poaching and something, and so what happens. So the proposal on this, you know, which I technically know is, uh, to move forward and work with everybody that wants to get involved, to try and get some funding to do the lake. But at, at the moment, putting fishing does still go, but, you know, no night fishing. Because obviously, with one or two people down in this area as well. So that, that's my proposal, if it's up to members and if you want to amend that, then that, that's it. So I've got a second, are we all in favour of that proposal to move forward? So that's carried on, if you...
I'm, I'm today, though. And obviously, unless we get that lake sorted out.
It's quite reasonable, I, you know, get to sit there and... That's what I was trying to say, the big fish what's in the main lake. He, that's through the summertime, that's busy. The pedalos, oak clear, they're back on. You've got swimmers in the front. The carp what's in there, you can't move from that lake, it's in the side of them, or kill them, put them into a smaller lake. The majority of fish what's in that lake is carp. So carp fishermen can back leg the legs, the lines, sorry. They can print the lines from the rod tip straight down to the floor. Which means, I've put it many times when I fish down there, where I might fish it for last ten years, twenty years old. They've got past and they've got over, they don't touch a line. Now, it's not fair for matchmen, the fish are like that, and having to reel in too much because the pedalo went back, or the swimmer went back, or somebody's picked a bar and been tackled, or it's not the maggots over. So if we can move progress, I think Eric might want, you know, to try and accommodate for night fishing work. And so, you know, we can bring that up. But let's move progress with investment, let's try and get this, let lakes run. Let's restock them again, once it's, I, I did what to do with that, it's all cleaned up. And then we can have another meeting invite members of public and anybody else that's interested in moving forward.
You don't need that fishing beaten on as well now, don't you?
Do I just have one more question on this then?
Just one thing, I'm looking forward to...
Just, just one minute, if you like, on this, um...
Maybe, uh, just looking forward in, in the near distance, potentially, uh, uh, compromise may want be. You don't match, match fish on days, seven days a week, say you're doing it two or three days. On the night before, you have night fishing of the competition, but if there is a competition, then potentially, could, could that work?
That's how it used to be, you used to put the notifications up and we never used to night fish the night before.
Yeah, it used to be always just like that, yeah. Always like that.
Labour used to always put posts up, the staff used to come down, just tell us the dates when the match is wrong. We never used to fish that night. And I can back show you that everybody, what, I know what, used to fish that place, and I can name you a lot of boys, a lot of people. The stopper in the notifications, though, we didn't know when the matches were out. Like I said, I've only had the five in there once and I haven't turned up when I were fishing. But I've had to move on and a couple have stayed on. It's not, it's now, things have changed, you've got media, we've got social media. You can put it up when the dates are supposed. But there's also that other one that's been mentioned tonight, of the small lake, of match fishing mainly. That's why I'm suggesting, don't put any big carp in the small lake. Then carp may not bother that small lake. You're on the big lake, all the night fishing, the matchmen. Why you've got your night fishing on your big lake, you've got your security. You've got deterrent from both lakes. If we're there on the, night fishing on the main lake and we see something falling down the small lake, probably would investigate. It's a deterrent. It keeps your fish off the table.
I think the main thing is, you know, you've got, it's like, I mean, the main thing is that once we get this professional body in to sort both lakes, uh, and advise us, you know, what, what, what we need to do, which would be, you know, what, what you're saying, Baz, then I think that's the way forward. So if you can just, that's to say on, on this subject, it's more progress, there's quite a few items to move on, thank you.
Well, I used to be match secretary at Conde. You will hear that, when lake for fishing, when it was match fishing. And you used to put the notices up, that all vendors at lake, match. And I used to go down early, just to make sure there's no one in eat fishing. And those three lads on, sat on notice boards with the notice up, match on. When it went on, if it were on that day, and they wouldn't move it, it took a lot to move them. I had to go back from the spark raiders to move them. So the notices were up, but it was with the notice on.
Well, that is, that's the same way to move forward, I think that's the only thing.
So we're only agreeing to move forward on one of the calls, and you've noted that in the meantime yet. So if we need that, you can move progress on that as soon as we can and get some, uh, funding investment and then some professional advice, what, what to do with lakes, I think that'd be a good thing. So we move on then to, uh, item number five, public question time. So if any member of public has got a question, if you'd like to raise it on the please. Uh, yes, Liz.
I just wanted to ask, I believe the town clerk's report into the dumped rubbish at the water park was issued to members on the tenth of June in the meeting, will that be being made public at some point?
Hopefully.
I believe that the clerk's report on the dumped rubbish at the water park was issued to members of the meeting on the tenth of June. I was just asking whether it would be possible for that to be made public at some point, because I'm certainly want to see it, I think.
Yeah, so what, what the town clerk has said, he will get back to you on that, he'll, he'll provide a way properly about the problem. Are there any more questions then from members of public on public question time?
Yes.
Yes, Alan.
I've had a phone call this evening, important that. A woman from Shetland... A woman from Shetland today has been down at the water park. She's paid for seven kids to go into the play world, have got to the gate, and the two hands had been spitting around with poles, and there's been a big issue on it, you see? Was the clerk aware of it? And refused to refund the money, and the, the kids haven't even been in the play world coming to fall.
That's disgusting.
I mean, that's... What, what, that would be a... And, and, let, let him look at that, because if the two sides got a story, whatever it is, I'm sure, I'm sure we'll, we'll kind of resolve that.
One of, one of the main things is we play world, i- i- if it is damp or wet, you've got to be mindful, you know, uh, at this assessment, that's done, and health and safety. And it, and if it's, uh, inspected and it, and they feel that there's a risk that, you know, children, then we won't close it. But on this occasion, Alan, i- i- if the town clerk can look into it, find out what it is. If that lady, uh, hadn't been refunded or whatever, and it's there, then let Alan liaise with whoever led that discussion, and then he'll get a refund on, or get some free tickets for that. I'll just pass on to councillor.
Definitely want to refund our pay, it's disgusting.
Well, I would imagine that they have got a refund on that because that's all understandable, but what James just said, I mean, it's been town council policy that when it's been raining, let's face it, the gare won't slide, the gare won't swing as it's wet through, so the door shut it. So I'm sure when Alan's had a look at that, we'll get a response outed.
Well, fairly well, no, she knows unsafe for a rock, she's probably wet, but she's gonna be refunded.
I think the main, the main thi- the main thing is, uh, if somebody has got a complaint, it's not to the councillors, it's still to, then to town council, to clerk, and then he can deal with it, you know, they... Because we're still side for a story. So if you have a look at that, Alan, you can deal with that, thanks for that, Alan. So I think, then, any, any further questions on public question time now? Yeah, and Eric, you?
It's just, I just want to ask about, uh, postage, uh... I mean, uh, well, probably three months back, I got four letters in two days, like, I mean, if we all got saved, we'd, we'd talk the best part of sixty pounds. And could be double up, probably, if we've caused too many problems, like, it's...
You know, I mean... I do send lots in via email, and some councillors do prefer to receive our profits. And I've not looked into Frankie Machines that I've been here, but I know through previous jobs, two or three of them, and I should send out a huge demand, Frankie Machines has always the best option, it's just...
Oh, no, no, I didn't mean that, Alan, what I meant, Alan, is, you see, I've got, like, two letters this week, and put them both in my envelope, but I mean, if it's gonna cause, obviously, any problems, I mean, that's... Obviously, that's a no-no, you know, but...
If you want to tackle it, I'm sure, but some days, yeah, I mean, that's not the norm, we get to it more often.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, you know, it's...
A chimney solution is not paper at all.
But we are telling it, so we have, we're out on paper.
No, they get paper.
You read it.
It's, uh, when you start having it up, Alan, it's quite expensive.
And I agree, because the solution to towns is not on paper at all.
Well...
Yeah, but if you can't read it online, you know, we have got any paper, but it's practice, do we get some lessons for reading it, we have paper? Huh?
Well, I, I talked to our tissue one of the tablet or whatever.
It's the council, it is, isn't it?
Yeah. I mean, I get mine when I finish it up, but I've also received it quite often. Yeah. I think, because the issue with some of these is, on, on the deadline date, you send an agenda out for, uh, town council meeting, and on, on the next day then, the agenda goes out for some violence. So you finish it getting to a let us, you know, which is probably unavoidable, otherwise you just deadline come on.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know, I understand. Anyway, we...
It's possible, it's not actually going to be...
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, I understand, but, you know...
It all depends on when you get your folks, I mean, it's set out, but we have to have a deliverer here. They stretch it out, you know, plus probably get a big hole in it.
It's not, I mean, it gets quite dry.
Yeah, that's why, yes.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree, if you can figure that out, we have, well, the council needs to have got them. So it would progress then to item number six, uh, YLC A, Wakefield branch chairman. So you see correspondent from the new chairman of Wakefield branch, the Yorkshire local council association, over to the councillor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, the, the new chairman of the Yorkshire local council association, councillor Tim Saunders, was due to attend tonight to say hello and to introduce himself as the new chairman. But I think he was there, he couldn't make it then, so he sends apologies. Uh, so it's just to make, get members aware that the new chairman is councillor Tim Saunders. And at some point, he will attend one of our meetings, but I know what he wanted to say, was for current members to attend the way out of meetings, which are held quarterly. Uh, any councillor can attend them, uh, but there are two voting members, uh, which our council is, I'm just one, councillors do, do. But all members can attend.
Thank you for that, Alan. So if we move on, uh, to item number seven, town council meetings to approve the minutes of the town council meeting on fifteenth of July two thousand twenty-one, can I have a move on, move on, thank you. Item number eight, committee and subcommittee meetings to adopt the minutes of the committee meetings and their respective subcommittees as follows. Committee, pleasure and recreation, on twenty second of July two thousand twenty-one. Finance, fifth of August two thousand twenty-one, and policy and planning, twelfth of August two thousand twenty-one. Can I move on? Thank you. Item number nine, a council payment to confirm the payment of accounts and approve the finance committee meeting on fifth of August. Can I move that, yeah, move that on? Item number ten. Item number ten, casual vacancy by election, the town clerk can report accordingly.
Thank you for the chairman, just to confirm there is currently casual vacancy for the end of Saturday. And Wakefield council confirmed that if it is a contested election, that is, if there's more than one candidate, it will be held on the sixteenth of September. Contentment election will be held, yeah, in the downstairs, I think. Yeah, going to be through, yeah, downstairs.
Uh, item number eleven, seaside event, to consider requests regarding children's rights for the seaside event. Uh, I think this is Tommy Tucker and this company, yeah.
Members will recall that the seaside event was not a bit approved, and that there was a request submitted uh, by, as the chairman said, Mr. Tucker and Mr. Mulhern, who the council have used before for previous, uh, events. And what they would propose for the council to consider is on the seaside event, which is twenty-sixth of August, and is that they would run one of their children's rides at a reduced cost of fifty pence per, per ride. If the council would, would consider that, and that all the income they get from those fifty pence rides, they will buy food and donate to local food banks.
Uh, so can I have a... Yeah, just two rides, yeah. Two children's rides, so I think that's, uh, a no-brainer, that, are we all in favour of that, members, yeah? Uh, the, the other thing, just to bring to your attention, we have Puch and Julie's show and different other things that I think you're aware of, has got started over the years on this seaside event. That's roughly about three thousand pounds, you can tell them that, that we budgeted on that. Three and a half, is it, three and a half thousand. You're pushing Julie and the other activities that go up on that day round park, and it's gone on for years. It's something that you supported, I hope, as yet.
Yeah.
So that's on twenty-six, so thank you for that. Item, uh, number twelve, uh, mental health charity.
So I will open this one a bit, move further on a little, learn each other a bit, um... A lot of people know that I have, did the past mental health depression, anxiety, that sort of thing. So it's something I'm really, uh, passionate about, helping out. I was lucky, I got help from, uh, County Board of Rights Heads twice. Um, as you're probably know, we're in one of the worst areas in the country for mental health, especially young men. And we've lost too many young men, young boys, due to their mental health. Um, I've not just gotten a bit, I mean, I've strongly been speaking with some mental health charities, but as I know, things take a while, I was just sort of hoping that I could propose that if we did get a mental health charity prepared to run... prepared to run group sessions, weekly sessions, or monthly sessions, that the council will be able to provide a room for your charge to that mental health charity. And that's basically what I'm proposing is, obviously, we don't need to look, I am talking to Andy's Man Club, they need to get back in touch with me, but obviously, it's relevant to any mental health charity, if I would propose to any mental health charity to the council to support that and allow, it could be here, it could be down at the central centre, it could be literally both as well. Although here is a better parking, deservedly. And so that's, hopefully, would the council be prepared, if the charity came forward, would be prepared to give them the room for your charge to have. Well, I've once, once, if you group sessions, well, and all the like, but.
So I think that's a good idea, but John's. So, Andy's Man's Club, anything like that, can we all be in favour of, you know, we could chase, but Sean can deal with that, he's going back for it, yeah. Maybe for the decisions, but it could be with Eric.
The other thing, if you remember, I mean, obviously, I mean, much, we gave money to a TLC, didn't we, a a mental health charity that's quite local here, and they applied to youth, obviously, didn't they, originally, from South Eamonn. So if you could probably liaise with Eamonn, we'd already got somebody that have committed recessions, and Dan King did recessions, but unfortunately, because of Covid, it just went on hold. But we did, we did provide five hundred pound unit in funding, and we let this room available, whether wants to do it, Sean. So that might be a good thing, you couldn't contact TLC, yeah?
And work together, Sean, and example, yeah.
I don't understand, Andy's Man Club is maybe, and I don't understand the job's weight, and trying to go up more, could be everybody.
That's a good idea, very good idea, yeah.
So the next item is a mini fest that I had a proposal sent in, to consider requests for holding a mini fest. And I think we've all got, we've got a copy of this proposal. Basically, they're interested in setting a mini festival up, PA system lighting and performances. There's a Bruce Springsteen performance, there's a Jimmy Abbott performance, and two of the other smaller acts with a big screen behind them. The total cost for this would be, I think it's about four and a half thousand, that other.
It's not even, I've got budgets, I can maybe, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so the budget that he's got here would be four and a half thousand, for the town council, I think, that he's wanting to pay. If we sell three hundred tickets at ten pound each, it generates obviously three thousand pounds, and obviously, we've got the full in bar takings on that, but I think at this late stage, because it's not nothing to budget, I don't know, the finance, is it, is it a dollar, could we do anything with it, or what do you think? Yeah.
Maybe, maybe we could, you know, further on that, we'll consider that.
Yeah, so I would defer this, defer this until later on a year or next year, yeah. I mean, we've got one player, and I'd have to September. The other thing is, the other thing is, you know, looking at this, which I never realised, if all that works, will we not, down there from September and all October, we won't be able to do it anyway, wouldn't we? So if you can defer this due to it works, and obviously, let's have a bit more information, I need to come back to members, yeah. Thank you for that. Number fourteen, hygiene and salt dispensers to consider, the cost of salt dispensers installation and maintenance for council properties, Alan, I'll leave that to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, and we already need cathedral hygiene for certain aspects of our hygiene. This is now cut from then forty percent, and it is about one pound forty-five per week, per unit. And it's for lakeside and the other white cup, if you have a vision, we do need, because it's an example football down there.
So, Alan. Uh. Is it, is it the hygiene company that we use, the dispensers that we have, that have been portable and that, you know, have not been screwed down? And we're getting it pinched every day, every week. So what these have proposed, that they put some fixtures in, so they can fill it, so that the screw took off, so they can't be removed. The cost of this is one forty-five, did you say, Alan, per week? And there'll be four units, I think there's toilets outside and toilets inside at lakeside. But you don't forget, at one forty-five a week, you're looking at two hundred and thirty pounds, what, a year? So I understand that, but would it be cheaper if we went out and bought some, screwed them on, let them fill them? That's what we've got to consider. So this contract, if we look about, Alan, will it be only over twelve pound, or could we? No, all I'm saying, I mean, if you think that that's all right, and I'm not going to probably, I'm just trying to think for everybody on this. So are we all in favour then to move forward to get these done, yeah? Yeah, that's unanimous then, yeah?
Well, I'm just, you're talking about toilets down there, the disgusting. The inside, and the outside one, sorry, I didn't put inside it, but there's something, and it's, first time I've been down, and it's not something that's just happened to them, they need new toilets. Full toilet, they need new ones. I had, one lady came out, she didn't know who I was, she's got a daughter, and she said she was feeling sick herself. She said, if my daughter, she said, I had to fetch it out, and I have a wheeling glass, that farmer, because she was that disgusting, who were being sick, so I went in to have a look.
Right.
And the toilets themselves, it looks like somebody's painted them round down the bottom, quite bullshit, they.
So, so if we can, if you can, have you noted that, Alan, yeah, Alan's noted that, so let Alan look at it, and then we can get these tied up or renewed or whatever, yeah.
Honestly, I've never seen anything like them, I went in there, they died.
He's noted that, and so, you know, because obviously, it's not on the agenda, because we'll call them, thank you.
It's when Alan goes, it has files.
So item number fifteen, training for councillors, equal opportunities and data protection, the town clerk to report to Cardyman. Is that better, council, until, no more ten local, okay. Just to confirm that the training for councillors and for some members of staff, primarily the managers, on equal opportunities and data protection will be held on Friday, the third of September, so I encourage all members to attend. Yeah, I'll have my own hotel. So the next one is item number sixteen, support for local businesses, what's it, I think this is yours, Sean, yeah?
So again, next to them, I suggest sixteen, oh, I might have called sixteen and seventeen, so the first one, they're similar in a way. So the support for local businesses is similar, is a similar idea, sort of doing last time, regards to support for charities, where we have a page on the council website, where local legal businesses, you're going to have to check their mention, the dot P A T V C, that type of thing, where you probably email the clerk and then just put on a brief description of what their business is, their links to their business pages, webpage, Facebook page, that sort of thing, they're going local, and officially, in this type of businesses. And again, also, I think, obviously, you have to be careful of costs, that's for local businesses where we can. So if we have something that's only three hundred pound, the local business is three hundred and twenty, could we as a council say, we would then support local business, it's a like-for-like quote, sort of thing. There's more on the website, we've got links, or we can, we can follow websites on the council Facebook page. Just see what's the thing, which links and the brief description. And this one, the website, the normal website is, I guess like most of it, we have, I often have people calling me, calling me, calling eventually, saying, when are you going to get this all fixed, when are you going to get this, do all that? And well, I always try to go, I can, council, would it be advising for the council, for any of the council, to have a page that has links, so first of all, decide what we do against what, or what we are responsible for, to what lines of wake are responsible for, but then either like an information page with numbers that they can get in touch with for certain items. Obviously, councillors would, if they're asked, they would do it themselves, but a lot of people like to go online, have a look. If you have a one-stop shop, or things like housing, or fixing your homes, getting rid of your rubbish, all that sort of stuff, just to promote it, and then people can look themselves, I know where to go, go on enter town council, there's a page on there. I'll put a link, and it sends me to the right place where I need to be, sort of thing.
Yeah, thanks for that, Sean, I think it is a good idea, obviously, you're the victim of the nudge of bringing you a bit of fresh blood in, into community. Lots of complaints that I get, though, and I think you're saying, the people that don't go online, aren't they, and they want you to deal enough to deal with that, so. But that's good, if we move progress with that, Alan, yeah? I'm sure Jeanne has seen it when she was in the district, this member inquired, he's got to go through the golden number, so all this fantastic idea I supported, if you have a direct number to that department, they will refer you back to the golden code, because they've got to get reference numbers and job numbers, so just be careful of that, thank you, sir. Thank you, Scott. And item number eighteen, exclusion of press and public, members of the public and the press to be excluded from the consideration of the business as a confidential nature, as per public bodies admission to meetings act nineteen sixty, so I'd like to thank members of the public for attending tonight, and have a safe journey, all.